That's why I inquired what the logic, what we were trying to gain by this change. I think we're creating a lot more work for the police department in checking permits and That they may not have the manpower to do that as easily. I was under the assumption that it was a mistake, that it wasn't going to be year-round. What is the logic in no parking on Main Street year-round?
That was a council decision. That was one that the council directed me to.
Yeah, I thought we only wanted it for, I thought, you know, seasonal.
My understanding was it was, I was.
But I don't, I mean, what? Do you, do you want people parking on Main Street overnight?
I don't think you do in the winter months.
Well, right.
And I think, I mean, and I, I talked to Burns about this on the phone, but I think this is where I personally admit, or perhaps as a council, we admit that bringing this back onto the agenda is a good idea. Having these open conversations, letting people share their perspective is good because not that I voted to remove the two-hour parking because I thought it was terrible. I was in favor of it, but I only have my perspective or the perspective of business owners that I've talked to previously about parking. So I find it, I think this is what council meetings should be about, communication and conversation and clarification. What did we mean? Are we clear? Are we clear with what our business owners and our citizens benefit from? So I just want to say, for me, this is what it's about. This is, this is what council is supposed to be about. And if we make a decision that we think is best for the city and, you know, whether we trust ourselves to follow that lead, or if we have to go back and look and say what is the best, then that's what we have to do, and that's what we're called to do.
Sure. No, I, I get it in the wintertime, snow removal is a real problem, and the DPW guys do an awesome job of getting the stuff cleaned up and, you know, keeping the sidewalks clear for pedestrians and stuff. But just in the summer, it doesn't really make a lot of sense to eliminate that parking on Main Street, to me. We have some of our guests, and we're careful in the winter to, we have sign on the door, "Don't park on Main Street." I patrol through there, and I grabbed a couple of parking tickets and came down and paid them myself for the people that were on Main Street when it did happen. I think two in 12 years, it's best minimal, but it's just not a welcome to Lowell gift that I wanted to pass out, so I took care of that. The, I think the change from two to four hours would be a great compromise because there are going to be employees that park there all day and, you know, the Tahoe and the Ponteau and things, and just, it is going to create a lot more enforcement, but at least people will think about it before they do that. I think that would be a great compromise, and I'd encourage you, maybe just leave the snow removal hours on Main Street, that makes sense, but I don't know other DPW work that needs to be done in the summer, and that would allow, because there are getting to be more people with apartments upstairs and different things. Thank you.
So is that, for, to change it to, like, no parking from X month to X month, that's something that we can add into the.
Yeah. The ordinance now states, "No parking on Main Street year-round from Hudson to Jefferson." So two A to six, six A, correct. You can change that. Council can change that. And you can change it to whatever you want.
Isn't, isn't it two to six on all streets, or is it just?
Two to six on all streets during November, from November 1st to April 1st. In the summertime, you can park on the streets. What they did for this one was just Main Street, no parking year-round.
Craig Longer, 827 North Washington Street. In the spirit of what Leo was saying and the brainstorming, I have to offer that I think we need to have more signage about where we do have parking available and have it redundant because you're not always, when you're driving around, you're not always going to see just one sign, so we need several signs. And I think we can also encourage parking on these side streets that there aren't any residents necessarily on them. So I, I just, like I say, in the spirit of brainstorming and that kind of thing, I think that's something we can look at.
We've added, even the last week, we've, we've added a parking sign behind the museum. I directed DPW to put a parking sign on Broadway. I haven't seen it yet.
Just in FYI, I was involved in, when Rich was still here, we had permission and we had some money to do some signage. In order to put a sign on this road.
On Main, I get that, but we have other places where we don't have.
We can put them on side things, but to do something here, we have to have MDOT's approval. They tell us what font to use, what color we can use on the, I mean, it's, and that's one of those things that people don't understand. Why can't you just throw a sign up? Because MDOT won't let us.
Like, the parking lot between King Milling and Shell, I think there's a perception that that's King Milling parking by some, there's perception.
Yeah.
Yeah. And so maybe you can't put that sign right on Main Street, but maybe in the back of the parking lot, up high enough to where, you know, people can't.
I'm not disagreeing with our concept, I'm just explaining.
Yep.
We can't throw a sign on M21.
Yeah, okay, that's all I have.
Also, let's be honest, and I don't think anybody would disagree, historic downtown like ours having a parking problem is a good problem.
Correct.
As Chief Valentine told us many times, former Chief Valentine, it is a good problem, yep.
Why? And I know Mike and I, we've had a conversation about getting the city parking signs out, so we utilize all of our parking spaces. And like Craig said, there's the King Milling parking lot, the parking lot next to King Milling is a city parking lot, but a lot of people think that's King Milling's employee parking lot. And I, if you know Brian Doyle, he's not going to pop for that electric power chargers out there, so they're ours. I think it's a very unused parking lot that somehow or another, more sign it has.
Even the museum lot is a, is a, it's very underutilized.
Right. But at what point is it not our job anymore to, oh, at what point, when we're doing stuff like this, are we overstepping? Because if you have a business and you, I, it shouldn't be my job to go tell your employees not to park out front of it, because you're doing detriment to your own businesses as well. So I just, I, I think two hours is a deterrent, but I don't know that there's not another solution, but for us to have to, you know, we're not going door-to-door telling businesses what to do, I think that's a gross overstep of what we're supposed to do up here.
I, I agree that two hour, I, I do two-hour parking as a deterrent.
As a deterrent to.
To, to stay, right, like.
Okay.
Like if I'm coming in.
As a deterrent to shopping and.
If I'm bringing my family to the side, and we've got four cars.
That's all I was looking for.
Yep.
And we're all staying for dinner and walking around or concert, that's, that's not practical. However, I do think that there is room for creative solution. I think that, I know that the idea of loading zones have been brought up, which I'm not against looking into what that looks like and what businesses those go in front of, how we decide that. I don't have those answers, but.
I'm glad you brought that up, because I, I, that was my next thing to bring up, is someone wisely suggested there were two businesses in particular, the antique store at one end, Karen's Store, because she doesn't have a back door, so people can't get furniture in and out. And the coffee shop was very concerned, because they have people that want to just pull in, pick up their to-go order, grab their mug of coffee and get on their way. And I believe it was Eric that wisely said, "Well, why not put a 30-minute loading zone?"
We did that.
We could just, not the whole bunch of them, but maybe one parking spot in front of those two respective businesses, something like that.
I can tell you from my experience, when we had this issue in my former community, one, we never had any two-hour parking rules. We, we just didn't enforce it, was, you know, we had the same, every downtown has the same issue where you have certain business owners that park in front of those. I don't care where you are.
Or park in front of somebody else's.
Correct. It's going to happen. But what they, what we, you know, we tried to actually restrict some parking and actually failed, so we just got rid of it. But one of the things they did do is when we built our, when we built Cornerstone, which is a four-story mixed-use building, there was, there was, there was a coffee shop, Japanese restaurant, jeweler, and a hair salon on the first floor, but three, three floors of condos. We did put, for the coffee shop, we did put, I believe, three, was it 15 or 30-minute parking spaces?
There were 10.
They were 10. Okay. I couldn't remember, but it's in the law. But basically, it was for people in the, in the morning for coffee. Made a lot of sense. It worked. We actually tried to restrict the parking for the residences in, in that area. We told them where to park. Well, the residents never parked where we told them to park, and then it created an issue because they took the parking for the customers, so then we just ultimately got rid of that. But I think you could, you know, I, I, I under, you know, I understand there's different businesses that have different needs. We're not going to be able to meet the need of every business, it's just not going to happen. But you could do loading zones, you could do 15-minute or 30-minute, whatever you want to do. It, it doesn't really, you know, it, whatever, whatever you want, it's fine. I would, if you're going to do, if you're going to have a time limit, I would probably ask you to go more towards four than two. We have to remember that our, we have one officer on patrol. Our officer's not going to be able to proactively enforce this, so it's going to be, it's going to be, you know, it's going to have to be problematic. And I also would be very leery about handing tickets to people coming into Lowell to, to shop. I would probably.
Give it the last four hours.
Yeah, I would probably, yeah, they'll never come back. I would probably want to steer the enforcement towards the 10% of the businesses. And we just, we just have to find out who we are, and I think eventually if we start writing tickets or something like, then they'll probably change their behavior, but to have, you know.
So you're saying to have the police department work with the businesses that are currently parking out front and saying, "Hey, look, you need to not have your employees in your, yourself parking."
You can, I mean.
But is that our problem?
That's another question, is that really your problem?
I'm not going to go into Eric's store and tell him how to run his business.
That's part of the issue too. I mean.
That's not what I was elected to do. I'll go in there and I'll shop, and I'll talk to them about what's going on, and I'll steal, say hello to people, but I'm not going to tell you how to run your business.
Right, but that's the thing, it, it, we don't, I don't want to be telling people, in the city, I don't want to tell people how to run their business.
You had to put a downtown like we had.
Right.
Where there was just nobody here.
Right.
We have a good thing going. I don't want to be the one that screws it up by, you know, overstepping my limits.
I mean, you know, I mean, it could be just like, you know, if the businesses know who the bad actors are, it could be just as simple as taking a picture, putting it on Facebook, saying, "Hey, look, look what he's doing." I mean, do, I mean, this time we complain about everything else?
As a business owner on Main Street, like Earl said, 75 to 80% of the people that shop us are from elsewhere, and they come to town because they heard that, you know, we have a vibrant Main Street, and we have all these things, and they enjoy their day. I, I just think that, you know, if you go back to a two-hour, it, it just kind of defeats where we're going as a city, right? Because it works, every day I get a phone call wanting to know if I got any space available for people to come here and open a business and do these things, and fortunately I have to tell them, "No," because my wife won't let me buy anymore, but, you can't get a call. Well, I can't, yes.
I'll tell her.
Okay, never mind. But you did, okay, if I come to a town that I don't know, like when we were in Muskegon, they had that little craft, you know what I'm talking about, the little mini strip mall? It was almost like a bunch of sheds.
That's what it was.
It was super cool. I could not have done that whole thing in two hours.
No way.
Right? So if I come into town and I go to Cliffs to get something fixed, and he tells me, "Oh, well, I gotta, it's going to take a little while, why don't you go down and check out Billie Weaver's or Red Barn or go over to Sneakers?" Now I gotta go, "Well, I only have an hour and 47 minutes left."
Right.
Right? So now, what doesn't get explored in our downtown?
Right.
I think two hours is a deterrent to people. You know what I mean? Or how many people you think come through here and drive around and say, "Well, the only spots open are two hour," and then just go to a different town completely? Or go downtown to the downtown market?
Look, the only reason I would like to see some time period put on there is so that if Jack Reedy or Karen or ex-business owner sees that Bronco that's been there since nine in the morning, they can do what they've been doing and call the cops and say, "Hey, it's been here since nine this morning." And there's some action that can be taken, whereas if we have nothing and somebody parks for eight hours at a whack, there's not even a avenue to complain.
Yep, I agree. I think Leo's right, I think there is a solution, you just have to be creative about it. But I don't think two hours is the answer. But I don't, that doesn't mean I know what the answer is, because I don't, but.
Let's hire a consulting firm.
I thought that's what you.
Seventy-five thousand dollars.
Oh, never mind.
For looking for parking.
But it's as easy as the, the way it's written, right? As soon as we come up with a creative solution, it's as easy as saying it out loud.
Yeah, basically, for this one, you could basically just direct the city how you want it to, without an ordinance.
And in two years, if we find whatever we decide isn't working for our city, we can also change that.
Correct.
I, I think that's what we have to need, you know, I think we have at least, you know, as a council, we have to humble ourselves that whatever we choose might not work, and it might not be best, and we might have to go back and review it again.
And when I was talking with a couple of the business owners, and they were asking what the solution is, I had to be honest, I don't know. I just don't park downtown. I mean, because I live so close, I don't have to. I have, you know, I've, I've been in Riverwalk Festival fireworks or concert series where people have said, "Hey, mind if we park at your house, because there's no downtown parking, no walk?" And I think that's an awesome problem to have. I tell them, "No," obviously, but I think it's a great problem to have.
With concerts, they've been parking down in the row.
Yeah.
The other thing is, is, is this, are we getting all this pushback and all this feedback? Are we getting it if we're talking about this at the end of June or the beginning of July? I don't know. But it's February and now March, and it's cold, and it's crappy out, you know what I mean? And this is not walking weather. Where if you're discussing parking problems in early September, somebody has a problem walking, you know what I mean?
You know, and, I mean, obviously, the, the other thing with parking is, obviously, people think, "There's a parking problem if you can't park directly where you want to go." That, that's a parking perception problem, that's not a parking problem. I've counted the spaces. There are 554, actually, let me correct myself, 551, because I counted three that were private. So there's 551 parking spaces between municipal lots and on-street parking from Jefferson to Hudson. That's it. One of the things I'm actually working on is I have, I have Regis putting a map for me, doing an overlay of our downtown over eight addresses, where they compare their downtown to Center Point, Woodland Mall, and the 28th Street Meyer. I've asked Regis to do Center Point, Woodland, and Lowell Meyer. The configuration of our downtown is smaller than those areas. People park a lot farther away and walk a lot farther to go where they got to go.
Well, even at the mall.
Right.
Number one, at the mall, employees have to park. If you go before the mall opens, you see all the cars parked way the hell away. Number two, who gets to park right in front of the store they want to go to in the mall? I mean, once in a while, you get lucky, but as a rule.
Yeah, and a lot of these bigger places are, you're already four or five rows back after you get through with the handicap spots and the wheelchair van accessible spots and the expected mother parking.
Delivery zone.
Yeah, and the delivery zone and the things where you can return carts and strollers. You're already four or five rows back before you even get.
And something you might be, want to consider is if you look at all the blocks of buildings that have parking in front of them, you might want to say, take two or three of them during the daytime hours and make them 30-minute, 45-minute, whatever you want. But I mean, you could do, if you put, you put a couple of those in front of each block.
I, I think the ultimate, well, at least my opinion of the solution for tonight is for us all to spend a little time educating ourselves on downtown parking. So I'd love to be able to talk about something and actually know what I'm talking about.
I recommend going to Facebook, LOL Chatter. Get all my accurate information.
I feel like sometimes you say things to bait me into saying other things I can't. I guess if there's nothing else for tonight, I'll move that we keep the parking ordinance discussion in old business.
I guess, what are you looking for from administration?
Nothing. I mean, if we have questions, answer them, or if you, if you can show us what other communities with similar problems, just help us learn.
Sure.
Is really what I'd like to see right now. Yeah, and I think to start, we need to look at the no-on-street parking for snow times open.
Yep.
Right? On Main Street.
That's a simple.
That's a simple one. So that's relatively easy, we can get that.
Do you want me to bring that back to the next meeting with the ordinance for that revision, or?
Yeah, I think that. I don't, do we even need, Jessica, do we need to wait, or can we just change it?
If you can clearly articulate what you want.
Just, we're just talking about changing the on-the-street to.
No.
November, uniform it with all the other.
Yeah, the Hudson, the, the, no parking from Main Street from Hudson and Jefferson, rather than having it two to six AM, 2:00 AM to 6:00 AM year-round, just doing it from November 1st to April 1st, which would align with.
It's uniform, it's what we do in the residential.
The on-street parking and.
Do we know how we, is anybody curious to go back to meeting minutes or to watch the YouTube video back of how we got to no-on-street parking year-round? Is anybody curious about?
I remember it because I, because I.
I'm not saying you remember it incorrectly, I'm just saying, how, how, what did that conversation flow from?
When we presented the parking ordinance the first time.
Right.
We had presented you the, we had presented, I believe, we presented originally from November 1st to April 1st, and we were told year-round.
And, and.
She's asking what the reasoning was.
I don't know the reasoning.
Yeah, exactly. I'm just, I'm just thinking back.
Yeah.
What, what conversation led us to say that? And perhaps there was a thought one of us had that felt.
Smart.
Felt comforting to us, for, for whatever reason, right? Like, perhaps we don't make any moves this evening, and we go back, and we really do our due diligence, so when we do come back, we not only have creative solution that we all feel is fair, but we also know where we all stood the entire process.
Fair.
And Mayor, to your question, how far could it be for you to have a written ordinance in front of you to look at?
Okay, then we can bring it back. I make a move that we table parking ordinance until the, to the Tuesday or Monday meeting?
Till Monday. So be the.
So the 20th.
Yeah.
20th, all right. Motion to table till March 20th.
I'll support.
Any other discussion? Motion and a second, although in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, per table. New business item, what is it, whatever it is. Anyway, A, fireworks application.
This is the Chamber's annual request for fireworks. The Riverwalk, the Riverwalk fireworks are on Saturday, July 8th, after it does. Same.
You've got to come do it one more time.
Yeah.
Big Liz, do it. Come on, Liz.
Where will people park for this, Liz? I believe you were, I believe you were chastised at the annual dinner for creating these parking problems. Now we have you on the stand.
Just so you know, we put up 15-minute parking signs all over town. And we also add parking here signs all over town too, for, so you know.
Thank you.
Okay. Yeah, this is Shannon, she's going to be your new executive director, but we're here tonight to ask you to sign the permit for the fireworks, the annual fireworks, and also the street closures, I think. Or do you want to do one thing in time?
Why don't we just do, we'll do it separate, but the first one will be the fireworks. No changes from last year.
No changes.
Is it going to be longer?
No, unless you want to throw in $10,000, let us know now.
I have a dime in my pocket. Trying to pad that retirement account on the way out.
Always seeking sponsors, you're right.
I make a motion, we approve the application for fireworks.
I will support that. Motion and a second. Any discussion? Sue.
Councilmember Groves.
Yes.
Mayor DeBoer.
No, no, I'm just kidding.
Councilmember Southwiddell-Zansen. Councilmember Yankovic.
Yes.
And Councilmember Chambers.
Yes. All right, um, the street closure, we should. Yeah. It should be you this time. No, Meg Liz did.
Meg Shannon.
Over the old guard.
We're both happy to do it.
Yeah.
I wouldn't say Liz is.
We're excited, I mean, it'll be interesting with the Rose Street project, we're driving it a little bit, to tell you the truth, but we're going to carry on with the festival, the best we're doing.
But are you excited about the improvements with such a large and amazing road project?
Yes.
That your council has helped facilitate?
Yes. It's going to be awesome when it's finished.
Thank you.
You're welcome. But again, closing streets for the Riverwalk Festival, we were asking Avery Street to the west to be closed on Wednesday night or Thursday morning.
Thursday, 6:00 AM.
Yep. And then on Saturday, we would close Avery Street to the east this way for the car show, and then a couple of the other streets that align with it as well.
Yeah, by the church, Jackson, all for the car rental thing. Yeah, because last year was a record-setting, I believe, for the amount of cars that showed up for our car show.
Yep, it was. But we had great weather too. It was a Chamber of Commerce kind of a day.
I make a motion to approve street closures.
I'll support. Any other discussion? Sue.
Mayor DeBoer.
Yes.
Councilmember Southwiddell-Zansen. Councilmember Yankovic.
Yes.
Councilmember Chambers.
Yes.
Councilmember Groves.
Yes.
All right, Carrie.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Dennis is next with the LCPV grant recommendations.
These are keeping me up kind of late here.
Carrie, I think it's late.
Dennis Kent, 1700 Faith Drive, and the Chair of the Lowell Cable TV Board. First of all, I'd like to thank the board and all the applicants for the work they put into, into the applications and reviewing the applications. It's a lot of work. We're also volunteers, we don't volunteer quite as, quite as much as some of the other groups. We're still volunteers. So we went through the applications this year, and we actually received less than the amount available. We decided we're just going to recommend carrying that over into next year rather than starting a new process this year, which, you know, takes time and kind of gets late in the year. I can just go through the ones we selected quick here, if you liked, in your packet also. We, we approved the annual, or recommending approval of the annual fund administration for 4,000. Lowell Historical Society Technology Upgrade for 4,200. First Congregational Church Senior Neighbors Guild is Club, 27,000 for improvements to the church. The only thing that we ask is that. The only thing that we ask is that, um, based on the way we were kind of reading the rules about whether we should be supporting an actual religious organization, whether the check should actually go to the church or to either Senior Neighbors or Guilders Club. So I think we need to...
And she goes, see, I already conferred with Jim, it needs to go to Senior Neighbors or Guilders, or wherever you want to do it, but not, not the church.
Okay. Uh, Flat River Outreach Transportation Program, this is one piece of a fairly large endeavor that are going, going on, uh, to set up a transportation, kind of a volunteer transportation program. Uh, we, we, we were, uh, agreed to be a participant in that startup cost. I think we have to monitor that, uh, probably to see what happens going forward, but, uh, we're, we'll commit to it at this point. Uh, the Grand Rapids Amateur Astronomical Association is creating a new, uh, Daystar Observatory and a new, new telescope that can be observed during, during the daylight hours, I believe, as well. They have a fairly large donation from one of their past, past members, um, so we're, we're participating in that. Uh, Kent District Library, uh, remodeling, uh, remodeling program, teen area remodeling program, twenty-two hundred dollars, it's fine. We agreed to, uh, fire department, uh, nozzle replacement project, ten thousand, agreed to that. Dog park, uh, weather shelter for small dog, dogs and small dog owners, that seemed to be a fair thing to do, um, for forty, forty-four hundred approximately. And, uh, uh, we decided to, um, participate in the rejuvenation of, of the Creekside Kingdom, the first step in this, um, for that, for twenty-four hundred. Uh, the only one we recommended not approving this year was the floor rehab for the arts, for the arts, Lowell Arts, I guess for a couple reasons, it sounded, it appeared to be more like routine maintenance, which we also, uh, recommend against, or, or, it's an ordinance against, and it was, what we could tell, it was activity that had already been done. I don't believe we go back and fake things that already, that have already happened. And we have, on a number of occasions, supported the Arts Council there, so we, we, I think we feel like we've, you know, we've done quite well with them. Uh, total amount comes to approximately seventy-nine thousand, and there's about thirty-three thousand remaining that will carry over into, uh, into, uh, next year. That's it.
Any questions for Dennis? Awesome, thanks, sir.
Thank you.
They do a good...
Indeed. Craig Fonger, eight-two-seven North Washington Street. As President of Nullisburg History and Technology Society, and honored that we got the grant for the technology upgrade.
They haven't said yes.
We haven't voted yet.
What condition that you're going to vote yes on all of this stuff?
Don't ask.
Or exclude me? I don't know, do you want me to continue, or?
Yeah, oh, you're already halfway there.
All right. I, I just, I promise, um, you know, not enough was asked in this cycle, so I promise with all this technology upgrades and everything, we'll put together a package and ask for a lot more money. So, thank you.
Make a motion to approve...
Excuse me one second, sorry about that, Mayor DeBoer, I do have an email to read and record. This is our fourteenth year of providing grants to the greater Lowell area to help meet many community needs. Our community has been blessed over and over by the LCTV fund and will continue for many more years to come. I want to take the time to thank the LCTV Board for their work on allocating this year's funds. It starts with Chairperson Dennis Kent, Board Members Mark Munn, Amanda Schraven, Tim Wittenbach, Bill Thompson, and Sue Simmons. I also want to take the time to thank Sue Ullery and her team, who puts the packages together for our review. I also want to thank the people who attended this year's meetings to give their thoughts as to why their organization qualified for funding. One thing that came out of the meeting this year was looking for the grant requirements to see if changes need to be made to meet the community needs. I would like to start this conversation sooner than later and have any changes made before our next meeting, December seventh, twenty-twenty-three, and look forward to City Council and manager input. Thanks, Councilmember Salzweilus.
Make a motion, we approve LCTV dispersment.
I'll support. Motion and a second, any objections, Craig?
Uh, when, when...
Councilmember Salzweilus Axon. Councilmember Yankovic?
Yes.
Councilmember Chambers?
Yes.
Councilmember Groves?
Yes.
And Mayor DeBoer?
Yes. Uh, all right, Mike, Resolution four-twenty-three, dissolution of the show vote committee. Not the show vote.
That's gonna be on chatter tomorrow.
It's all the show vote!
The City Chair does not allow standing committees to the City Council. The Lowell Show Vote Six Committee was formed by the council to address the needs of the show vote. Since the formation of this committee, they have formed a separate Michigan nonprofit association, and we have approved transfer of ownership to the, of the show vote to the organization. There is no longer a need for this committee to be in the auspices of the city of Lowell, attached as Resolucional four-dash-twenty-three to dissolve the Lowell Show Vote Six Committee. I'm recommending the Lowell City Council approve Resolucional four-dash-twenty-three as President.
I'll make that a motion.
Support?
Any other discussion? Sue?
Councilmember Yankovic?
Yes.
Councilmember Chambers?
Yes.
Councilmember Groves?
Yes.
Mayor DeBoer?
Yes.
Councilmember Salzweilus Axon.
All right, uh, resolution, no, resolution. Not yet. I'll have to put this on chatter. Five-twenty-three, utility easement equipment D for USDA.
Yep. Upon examination of the properties related to the USDA financing for Monroe and Washington, two issues were presented that need to be resolved in order to move forward with the project. First, an easement is needed from the Grand Rapids Gravel Company for a sewer lift station where the line traverses the property. We have received such easement from Grand Rapids Gravel and need to accept it. Second, there are some title discrepancies as to, as to the fairground property. Many years ago, Lowell Area Schools owned three parcels that consisted of the fairground, which included the King Building, the baseball field, Bush Field, and a southern portion of this property. Ownership of the parcels was transferred to the city, but was never done so formally, which created some confusion as to title. In order to resolve all discrepancies, Lowell Area Schools has agreed to formally transfer their rights, if any, to such properties to the city. Resolucional five-dash-twenty-three, which resolves the above issues, is attached to accept and authorize the utility easements, utility easement agreement with Grand Rapids Gravel, and to accept and authorize the execution of equipment Ds from Lowell Area Schools. I'm recommending Resolucional five-dash-twenty-three as presented.
You guys already did the hardware, you just need the resolution.
Correct, we've already done it, yes.
So moved. Support, discussion? Sue?
Councilmember Chambers?
Yes.
Councilmember Groves?
Yes.
Mayor DeBoer?
Yes.
Councilmember Salzweilus Axon, and Councilmember Yankovic?
Yes.
All right, uh, Board and Commissioner reports.
The museum wanted some money from the historical district, and we have none. Maybe we could get some LCTV funds transferred.
Do you want to borrow a couple bucks, Steve?
It's all I got.
All right. Uh, I have, I have missed a day, so I haven't...
Yeah, my meeting's...
Mine, too. Uh, Mike, City Managers report.
Couple items, Monroe and Washington, Monroe, uh, we're still in the bid process, huh? We're actually gonna be having a meeting with the merchants tomorrow to, to explain the, the project.
Merchants or residents?
The merchants, we'll do the residents, we're gonna go separately, we'll do the merchants, then we'll do the residents. So, um, we're, we're having that meeting tomorrow. With Washington Street, we are in the middle of the engineering, um, we are meeting tomorrow with USDA, uh, to formally start our application for Washington for next year. Hopefully, it should be a lot simpler, as a lot of the work has already been done, um, so hopefully that moves along. Um, Riverside Drive, um, we just received notice from the county that they're accepting applications for this year's Community Development Black Grant Program. Um, if you recall, we received about, we, fifty percent of the cost to replace, replace Amity was covered by the CDBG four years ago. Being, that has been four years, we're in our best position to get considered for the funds. Um, we will be submitting a, a request for fifty percent of the costs for Riverside for the twenty-four, twenty-five construction season. So I, I'm working with the county on that. Also, something we, we will probably add to the project, the water line, there is no water line on Riverside from Hudson to Foreman. Everyone connects their water off of Hudson. We would add the line as part of the project, but we wouldn't require connection until something was to happen down the road where they needed to connect. But we wouldn't require it now, um, but it would be there. Once the reliability issue allows us to loop the system, but it would, down the road, if we, if we needed that, we would, we would allow them to connect, and since those residents have already played capital connections, we won't, we wouldn't charge them for that. So, um, but it, it is something that we're gonna add to the project, um, as we move forward. We did receive a request from the county last week, um, to write letters of support, um, to that, for them. They're seeking a four-point-one-million-dollar grant to do repairs to the Fallsburg Dam. Um, so I had submitted letters, uh, a letter of support on the city's behalf, and King Milling did as well, um, so we'll, we can see what happens with that. Last week, we did receive our, um, notice of our marijuana funds. The city will receive just under three-hundred-and-sixty-three thousand dollars, which is the equivalent to close to ten percent of our general fund revenue. Those funds, once we receive them, they will be transferred directly to the local street fund. Um, I was asked to see if we could do more streets because of it. We're planning right now to do Ottawa Street, the DDA, I'm putting it in our budget to do for the next fiscal year. I'm looking at possibly adding Brook, which is, connects off Ottawa, it's a very small street, but we might be wanting, we might be able to do that. I'm a little leery to do any more, because when, we have, we'll have the funds to do all the cross streets between, um, Fremont and Front and Lafayette and Jefferson, once Monroe and Washington are done, and that's about, you're looking at about a million for to do all those streets, at least the estimates right now, so, um, there'd be a, there'd be a very large project in addition to the, to the very large projects that we're working on. So, there's that. And then, lastly, um, a couple weeks back, the speed sign with over off of Jefferson and Main was hit. Um, it was hit by a truck, it was damaged, we don't, we don't have any more information on the fact it was hit. Um, we did send it back to the manufacturer, they may be able to repair it for two thousand dollars, but they're looking to see if they can. I would prefer that, because the cost to replace it would either be, um, six thousand dollars of, out of our pocket, or we'd have to have the insurance company cover it, which then is a claim that we don't want to have, so we're trying to see if we can get the manufacturer to fix it. Hopefully, we know more in the next couple of weeks, but that's all I have.
No, no, who hit it?
We know a truck hit it.
But we...
We, we, there's no...
There's no way to get their insurance?
No, we have no, yeah, we just know they hit. Yeah, basically, truck, turn, hit it, and we have no, we have no, we don't know.
I have a question about Riverside.
Yes.
So when we do that, and we run the new water main, you know, I get that creates redundancy in the system. Generally, those water lines are, um, close to the edge of the road. Are we gonna run stubs?
Yeah.
Are you gonna run stubs into the property, of the property owner, so when the time comes, we're not tearing our new street up?
Exactly. The idea would be to put it in, have it there, and when they have issues with their line that crosses their neighbor behind Hudson, gives them an opportunity to go out to the new main and upgrade their own system themselves. It'll be their responsibility to shut off into them.
But this though will be...
It'll all be there for them somewhere in, in the grassy area, so that we don't have to dig up.
Sure, good, great. I'm happy with that.
Good, good. All right, uh, I don't have anything for appointments, so council comments.
I'd like to thank Marty for contacting the Attorney General and getting the check to be settled.
That's an interesting point, Paul.
I'd like to repeat what I said last week, that even though I don't agree with everything everybody said, I sure appreciate people showing up and letting us know what's on their mind. Thank you.
Thank you, Marty.
Uh, I'd like to thank everybody that comes to our copy of the council, I wish we had more people, um, as we found out now, we can, you know, during that time, Eric expressed concern, um, and that I was able to help out with it. I mean, that's kind of what those things are there for. And then, the whole asking Jessica if it's okay if we respond to these texts and, and stuff like that, and it's good to know now that, kind of, we got a green light, we can go ahead, so that should help in the long run.
Um, well, thank you all for staying this entire meeting. I always say, so many people stay for the meeting, but I would have not faulted you if you left an hour ago. It's a late night. Um, but, um, as an ally to the LGBTQIA+ community, um, I feel like it's my responsibility to stick up for that community, who, um, I am a close ally to, and I just want to say that if you are a part of that community, I am a safe person. Um, we celebrated, um, Lowell Pride this weekend with our annual gala, um, and we raised over five-hundred dollars to go towards our Pride event in, um, July, or June. Um, so, that's my take.
Wasn't even gonna say anything about that. Um, I'm not gonna be part of any governmental body that stifles free speech. If you want to have an event here, it means we have created a place where you feel comfortable, that your event will be well-attended and beneficial, so that means be proud, not angry. Um, also, nobody's making you go, and nobody's taking school buses full of kidnapped children down there, enforcing them to reap green eggs and ham with the drag queen. It's just simply not happening, and to believe anything to the contrary is just ridiculous. I don't enjoy being, I'm wrong enough when I'm actually wrong, that I don't need to be accused of being wrong when I'm not. So, if you're looking to elect five people who know everything, you're gonna be unhappy for the rest of your life, because those people just don't, simply don't exist. We are trying to do the best job we can, because we do live here, too, and we do, for the most part, volunteer to do most of the stuff we do, and I, most of the time, genuinely enjoy it. We are not secretly making decisions and blowing through agenda items, um, so that people can't talk. And this parking thing didn't come up organically last second, to believe anything to the contrary would be at your own peril, because we have been talking about it for months. Um, I pride myself on actually, on public hearings and allowing people to talk, and maintaining a public comment period that's five minutes instead of three, which is what you get most other places, and not saying, oh, Eric, you already talked, so you don't get to talk on anything else. No.